Okay. Welcome to the March Planning Commission meeting. Please join me in a salute to the flag. We have one regular member of the planning commission on an excused absence and we have the pleasure of having Commissioner Chow here. So we have a full complement of five commissioners. The postings of this meeting has been accomplished in the San Marino City Hall, the San Marino Public Library, the Marino Recreation Department, of course, on the San Marino website. Each commissioner has received the plans and the agenda and and viewed staff comments and has visited the site of the application. And accordingly, there's a familiarity with the applications that are before us. The general order for the hearings will be as follows. We're going to take them in order. Initially, we'll ask staff to discuss the case, provide some background information. Thereafter, the applicant or the applicant's representative, if they desire, can come forward and make a brief presentation, no more than five minutes. Put a cap on that a while back. The hearing then would be open to the public. I'll ask for a public comments. And if anyone wishes to make such a public comment, you're more than welcome to do so. It'll be a three-minute cap on that. Just come forward, state your name and address, and that's all that's needed. Don't repeat items that were previously made. And again, speak to only the planning commission issues, not outside issues. Okay, and it's important understand that once the project is approved, if it is approved, the drawings that are put forth of the application contents become the legal documents. If any changes are to be made, they have to be made by coming back to the commission to make those changes. If changes are made without any authority whatsoever, there's a fine payable to the city of San Marino equal to or greater equal to, excuse me, the greater of five percent of the project valuation or $2,500. And even with that, the changes are not accepted, will be required to be removed. So it's important to understand the significance of each and every application. Also important to understand that there is a 15-day appeal period where any interested party, it could be the applicant, it could be someone who has an interest in the application, can appeal the results of this commission to the city council. We're going to take items in order as shown on the agenda. There's no need to take them out of order and should be able to wrap this up. We have very few items this evening. First of all, let me ask if anyone wishes to make a public comment about anything that's of interest to the planning commission that's not on the agenda? Have anyone online who wishes to make that comment familiar?
Not have anybody online who wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda.
Very well, let's begin the
Chair, I think we still haven't taken roll call yet.
Why, I just shortcut.
I didn't know if that was necessary.
Oh, and it's in her stead. Okay, well, let's, let's go ahead and and proceed with the item number one. Do you, can we have a staff report on that, please?
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. Staff is requesting a continuance to adjourn for this project for two reasons. Staff commissioned a technical peer review of a technical study that was provided by the applicant. Our consultant thought they would be ready for tonight's meeting, but unfortunately, they were not ready. So we're we're asking for continuance based on that reason. And also a neighbor of the property had mentioned to staff that they had not been approached by the applicant. So this is an opportunity for the applicant to approach the neighbor and daylight the the plants. So for those reasons, staff is requesting a continuance.
And with regard to that, do I hear a motion to continue that matter?
I'll move to consider design review case number DR 22-21 at 3325 Monterey Road to the April 20, I'm sorry, April 26. Any commissioning?
A second.
Second.
All, please.
For roll call, alternate Commissioner Chow?
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chang?
Yes.
And Chair Brody?
Yes. Go on to item number two. You may have a staff report on that, please.
Thank you, Chair and commissioners, commissioners. For the record, this is Assistant Planner Savak Sastunian giving the report on item number two. This is for the appeal of designer view case number DR 22-70 at 1360 Bradbury Road. The applicant proposes to remove existing synthetic roof tiles to install certainty presidential shape TL composition shingles in the shadow gray color. The project is subject to designer view because the residence does not meet the prerequisite of having composition roofing material currently installed. And also because the proposed color and material is not found on the pre-approved roof materials, colors, and application list. The subject residence is identified as a district contributor to a future potential San Marino Highlands Residential District. The city's consultants, Architectural Resources Group concluded that despite some properties having been altered, the district retains sufficient integrity to be eligible for listing in the California Register and as a San Marino Historic District. The consultant survey did capture that the original roof on this residence has already been replaced. The project received 10 neighborhood input letters with no objection, zero letters against the project, and four non-responses. Only two of the four design review findings are applicable for this project. Staff found compatibility with the, within the legal neighborhood based on the residence located at 1395 Bradbury Road having composition shingles and found that colors and materials will be consistent across the residence. During the March 1st Design Review Committee meeting, the committee disagreed with staff's finding and denied the project due to their inability to make finding number one for compatibility within the legal neighborhood. The committee cited the prominence of natural and simulated wood shake roofing material. Is this? Sorry, the committee cited the prominence of the natural and simulated wood shake roofing material in the neighborhood as a reason for the denial. If the planning commission should consider approval for the appeal, it should be with the two conditions cited on the staff report. And that concludes staff's report. Staff is available to answer any questions the commission may have. And the applicant and homeowner are also here to provide additional context.
Seven, five minutes.
Yes.
So I understand that you just mentioned your staff report and in your summary that 1395 Bradbury Road has a composite composition single as well. You know if they received a an application in order to replace that roof and said roof is replaced?
Thank you for the question. I wanted to do the permit research and within the legal neighborhood. The property at 1395 Bradbury does have a roofing permit from 1983 or shingles. So does that answer your question?
Does, and just for my, just for clarification, in 1980, was there also a design review that had to approve that before?
I can answer that.
That's great. Thank you for that clarification. So that being said, the applicant could have just come over the counter and applied for composition shingle at that time.
That's correct.
So this is a non-conforming use with regard to that property.
That's correct.
In the legal neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
That was exactly my question, so thank you.
And then, I'm sorry, Chair, we still need to hear you through the mic.
Back too far, too much confidence.
There, right there is. Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have, let's open it on the public hearing side. First of all, do we have an applicant or applicant's representative who wishes to come forth and make a brief five-minute statement? Yeah, I hear, I see some hands raised. Yeah. Just state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Kenneth Liu. I'm the owner of I guess the premise of my project is to replace my roof. I just moved into the neighborhood. So unfortunately, after the rain this year, I found out that my roof was leaking and the previous project that was placed in from the previous owner said that this real was a cow shape real. And unfortunately, I think that interior is not no longer used anymore and it's here you are. So I was kind of pressed upon trying to fix my roof. Unfortunately, the, you know, after multiple bids to look at my roof, it's not repairable. So I was forced to end my entire roof because of the leak.
Sir, can you, can you speak? I'm sorry. Can you speak straight to the microphone?
So looking into the appropriate projects, I was kind of looking into two different realms, either the presidential pre-approved shingles or the cedar light. Looking at this opportunity, I was hoping to upgrade the home to not just the shingle tiles, but also put solar panels on top of my roof to just upgrade my, my house in general. And after speaking with solar panel experts, they're recommending that if I were to do that, the proper material used moving forward would be tingled itself. So that was the premise of moving forward with this project. Obviously, if my roof wasn't leaking, I wouldn't have this position. So amen.
Thank you. You, you have an individual you'd like to come forward and like to break forward?
Yeah, a roofer that I'm contracting with right now.
My name is Chris Upshering for the record. And yeah, I kind of agree with the solar contractors that a composition shingle was a lot more waterproof in the long run. There are a few methods of doing composition shingle and putting tile back around the perimeter, but we have done this a few times in the past and not to say every time, but we frequently go back to correct issues and fix leaks and things like that. Also with the long-term servicing of solar panels, people need to walk on the roof with the lightweight tiles that are installed. It's a lot more likely for those to break and cause leaks.
Anyone else wish to speak for or against or about the proposal? Do we have anyone online that wants to voice a point of view?
Not have anybody online.
Close the public hearing. Let me just add one thing because Commissioner Dustin and myself have been working on the on the approved roofing list and there presently is under consideration three new products that are out and they were recommended in, I believe, five or six different iterations. So that's presently in the the in-process scenario right now. It'll be put before the DRC and we'll start that program going. In any event, let me just go down the line and all right, I'll turn to Commissioner Chow then.
Fair enough. So I, I drove around the neighborhood and I looked at all 17 properties that were also provided by the applicant as the list of properties that have existing composition shingle. And it's my general opinion, and I'll work backwards here, is my general opinion that the composition shingles that I saw during my drive around the neighborhood were not compatible and harmonious to the rest of the city at large. So then stepping back to the property here, I drove up and down Bradbury Road and I took a look at it and I did not feel that the applicant's request or composition shingle would be compatible and harmonious with the remaining legal neighborhood. You know, one of the things that I considered was that, well, if another property on the street had it, and maybe I need to kind of consider that in a way my decision as to whether or not to approve the applicant's appeal or deny. And, you know, it was very enlightening to learn that there was no DRC at the time and that that's actually property that has existing roofs because of non-compounding legal use, which is not the standard today. So although the homeowner at 1395 Bradbury Road legitimately has a composition shingle, I do not feel that the applicant's application is sufficient here to meet the standards that we must abide by as a planning commission. And that being said, with regard, there is a pre-approved list. I understand that a list is going to be further updated. I mean, I can't, I just can't imagine. I understand the applicant's expression about interest in putting solar panels and I, I understand that. That, that is not for our review today. But I understand the desire. I just can't understand why this cannot solar panels cannot be installed based on things that would be pre-approved or things that would not be would be composition shingle. So for, for that, my vote would be to deny the appeal.
Commissioner Dustin, just before, so I want to clarify something for the commission. The use is now legal non-conforming. The, the only difference is there's a different process under which the use is approved, but the use itself is now legal non-conforming. I just want to clarify that for the record.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't understand that. Is there any way you can elaborate?
Sure. So the process under which the 1983 83 was, it was a process was over the counter. But the use itself is not, not conforming. Composition shingle is allowed. It's just the process in which it's allowed is different today than it was before. Legal non-conforming would be, for example, if you have a small store within a legal neighborhood where that small store is no longer allowed, that would be a legal non-conforming use. This is not a use, this is just an application or a process in which you can apply certain materials to that.
So there are instances within the city where composition shingle is allowed. As long as it goes through the design review.
Correct. Right. Couple of points. First is I'd, I'd just like to ask staff and city council at our joint meeting, we talked about the notification process and we're going to take a look at that. This case really troubled me with the neighborhood input letters. I don't think there was any malicious intent on the part of the applicant in pre-populating the forms, but that action, regardless of what the intent was, basically invalidates their use by me in this situation completely because we, we cannot, I mean, I can't have any confidence in the response given by the, by the neighbors was what they intended or what they were comfortable in giving under those circumstances. But I think that needs to be considered when we look at the notification process. I'm going to try real hard to sort of separate my personal feelings from what our duties are here. I probably am in the minority that I'm a fan of composition shingle and I'm, I'm an advocate for its expansion of its use in the city. I know that's not a popular opinion, but I just think it's, it's going to be necessary. I listened to the Design Review Committee talk about this project. A lot of their objections were that product does not really look like wood shake. Nothing looks like wood shake, except wood shake. The, the steel roofs that we've ever proved in the past, they do not look like wood shake. They're a product. These are a product. They don't look like wood shake. I don't think they report to look like wood shake. But they are a product. And so I'm looking at it from just what it is, not what it may or may not look like. I think the appearance of this product is attractive and I think it is compatible with this architectural style of home. The one area where I'm not so sure is where, where I can make the finding is, is it compatible with the neighborhood? I think my colleague here brought up some good points. So I'm going to have to sort of withhold my judgment completely on this until I sort of hear from everyone, but I'm inclined to, to think that this is a good candidate for this product. It's a it's a small home. It's in a, in a neighborhood of modest homes. I don't think, I, I looked at the list that we got of, of this product installed on other properties in town, some of them much larger than this home. And actually, the product is very attractive, but I thought it was compatible in those situations. So I, I think it would be compatible here, but I'm, I'm just I'm struggling a little bit with that. So I'm going to reserve judgment until I hear from them. Yeah. I like the product, the certainty TL product, and I think it's suitable for, for, so I'll just start off first by saying that. I will also add, I walked up and down the street at Bradbury and the one thing I came to agreement on with myself was the only consistent thing on that street was inconsistency with, with the roofing, either the, the condition or the type. And secondarily, homestyles, there's a very eclectic type of homestyles. Yes, they're all kind of single family, you know, one single story in a certain lot size, but outside of that, that, that's the only consistent thing I could find. And so when I looked at this specific home and what they're proposing specifically for the certainty product, I, the only thing I could come to conclusion was that this would be an improvement for the overall neighborhood and it would be the, one of the best-looking roofs on that street today. So obviously, one, I support it. Two, I, I think what we will come to a realization very quickly here with, with the work that the subcommittees doing on looking at materials, et cetera, is the, the the roofing materials and comp shingle is, is ultimately, I think, what is the best product available we're going to find. For, for the, for the use and purposes of our, our city and our homeowners. It's, it's just what makes sense. I myself have a tower from my, you know, composite tower from my home. And to the point that's been reiterated and reiterated again, you cannot walk on it. If anyone's going to do any type of service or cleaning on the roof, you will step and damage town and you will have leaks. And that's exactly what happened to my own home. And so right now, the way the code's written and the, the requirements criteria, I can't change it to a comp shingle roof because I don't, it doesn't exist on my property. So I would be before this very same committee to plead my case. And I have not put solar and I have, and, and I don't say that proudly, but I have not put solar for the very reason because you need to have they prefer material is a comp shingle roof or something that's walkable. So I think there's a lot, you guys have a lot of work to do on subcommittee to consider as we move in a direction, but more broadly, I think this material will work for the house. I think it is compatible with the neighborhood. I think it will improve the neighborhood and the overall streetscape. And I am supportive of the proposal. I think there is a reality we have to come to that there's a certain type of material that is not practical and, and it makes it difficult for homeowners to do something as simple as maintain their homes and have a roof that doesn't leak. I have a, another property I own in a different city and I had to change that roofers and my tenant in the, in the home was at a leaky roof and I was in this very same boat of deciding what I'm going to do, how I'm going to do it and for what cost. And everyone's like, no, we're not going to do tile or we don't do tile or we prefer just doing shoe. Everyone who's not doing shoe, right? So I, I was in that same kind of pickle. Even though my own home, I have a tower and I think it's a beautiful roof, but as far as function and functionality and, and cost, it's just, it's not there. And I'm not putting solar because I have a tower because it just makes sense. How do you maintain it? How do you stuff? So long and short, I think this is a perfect example of a homeowner who wants to put a good quality roof that looks, in my opinion, a, a good-looking roof and is compatible with his home. And ultimately, I think as the rest of the neighbors come, come to the reality that their own roofs are leaking and have replacement, I think there will be consistency compatibility throughout the neighborhood.
Very much.
All right, thank you. This has been a fascinating discussion to me because I hate this roof. There you go. We've got two commissioners who think it's wonderful and I think it's very ugly. I go, I can go around the whole area and pick them out. I call them the jigsaw roof. They strike me as screaming fake. And I want, of course, roofs that, okay, yes, I know wood shake is, is an anachronism, is not the right word. But I love it. And they're getting, and the thing about talking about how this is the future is I have never seen a product that has gone through more changes and advancements in such a quick time as roofs, roofs and roofing material. And it's going to continue to happen in my case. Cow shake was the best. You know what happened to that? Because you have to look at these roofs, obviously, you all know this, and it takes time to see how they perform. So I, I'm not sure it's the wave of future, maybe, certainly maybe, but I'm not ready to say that. Because I know I have a friend who recently, and it was very expensive, but recently did install a very nice-looking wood shake substitute, if you will. So I think they're out there if you want it. I love this street. The last time we had Bradbury item, I think I told you that I walked Bradbury to the high school all of my high school years. So I'm extremely familiar with this street. I think it's one of the few streets in some ways that's still fairly intact for the way it started. And we don't say that about many streets. I'll pick on Gainesboro, I pick on that, that block of Oak Knoll and I pick on other streets that have just drastically changed. This isn't one of them. And I'd like to see it stay that way. And for me, that means saying that it's not compatible. I can't stand that. Well, I'm 1395. I'm sorry. I say it respectfully. Again, I think it sticks out in a bad way. I don't want to add to that. I think it is, this type of roof is incompatible with that beautiful street that mostly has wood or wood shake substitutes. And I personally agree with Commissioner Chow and everything he said and would not, and would go to deny this appeal.
Chair, may I add one thing for clarification?
Sure.
To Commissioner Dustin's point. He had brought up the, the the fact about the neighborhood input letters. Thank you, having been pre-filled. The homeowner did a second round of those and we forwarded, forwarded them to you just as a good faith effort. Of course, you're still reviewing the application, the novel as it was originally, but he just wanted to include that for your consideration.
Yeah, thank you. I, I did receive those. My concern is, is that this is my area of training is human behavior and psychology. When you get somebody to commit to a position and then you ask them to restate their position, they're already committed to that. So I, I can't in good faith look at either the old letters or the new letters. To me, they're
they're already committed to that. So I I can't in good faith look at either the old letters or the new letters. To me, they're tainted. Maybe unintentionally, but they're still tainted. The applicant inadvertently poisoned the well, so I can't I can't consider those, but I understand. Thanks.
Yeah, my my thought is I'm not adverse to this type of product at all. I think it has its place. On the other hand, I do want to stress this. It is not you, how shall I say it? It is not a solution to all roofing issues at all. It does apply here, though, and I agree with Commissioner Chang on that point. Certain deed presidential is is a decent product. Is an acceptable product. I don't have really a problem with it. There were several others that we looked at, both Commissioner Dustin and I that also are highly competitive in the upper scale or the upper tier of this type of product. And I think since wood shake is is completely out of the ballpark at this point, that we've got to consider alternatives that do not involve a complete redo of the futressing of the roof. And when it comes down to that, it comes down to composition shingles. It's a matter of how the composition shingles are made, how they're stalled, and what is the end look on it in in a hole like this? I don't see that as a deal breaker. That's my thought on this. So with that, I'll ask if anyone has a
Can I just ask for clarification? I believe the city council is now allowing shake to be replaced. Does anyone, does staff know if that's accurate?
Yes. So the requirement to allow for wood shake to be placed on a home as a re-roof is that if the home has it as existing, for instance, like a new development wouldn't be able to do with shake, you have to have it as existing. Or if you had composite right now and you wanted to go with shake, we wouldn't allow for that either.
Right. But I think wood shake was completely prohibited not very long ago.
Correct.
So that's been the change. Okay.
I understand it.
No, I just wanted just clarification. You said it was and you're right. There's there's a lot of homes that cannot. But my home, for example, not that I could talk my husband into it, but could we could re-put the shake.
I would hope that in the future, there'll be better products out there who will replace the wood shake because there are problems with Okay, and with that, do we have a motion of any?
If we could just maybe have a little bit of more discussion, because I think I'm gonna sort of be on the fence on this one still, and I want to. So my colleagues on either end here, I'm just curious because some of the things I'm struggling with are can you find a product to be compatible with the neighborhood even if it doesn't exist in the neighborhood? I think that's a possibility.
Yes.
I definitely think so. And you have that I think all over all over town. The thing is, if it's consistent within itself, if it applies within itself and is not a variation of such a great degree from the neighboring homes, I think it fits in, but we have moldy ones next to Spanish by the mirror. I mean, it does reduce that way. But the colonial looks like a colonial and the Spanish Mediterranean looks like that.
The other concern is something that you brought up. Chair is you don't see this as a a magic bullet that solves all roofing problems. And that's a concern I have is this becoming sort of opening the floodgates that this product is approved and now what's to stop that entire neighborhood from leaving over?
Exactly.
Product. I mean, I see a lot of advantages to to allowing it in that just from a personal standpoint, I'd like to see it on a house and see how it ages. That's the problem is a lot of these materials, we don't see them how they look twenty years down the road. So there's an advantage to letting a test one out there, but I also don't want it to become a golden ticket for anybody who wants to do their roof to say now, well, they did it. I want to do it too.
And and as it sits, my understanding is it doesn't have a comp shingle. Now, it's still coming forward, this committee to review and improve. Right? So it's only those that have the material already on the property that can go to the pre-approved list and put the
I understand that the way the code is written, they're gonna have to go through the design review process, but there's a couple of things that I'm I'm very reticent to override the decision of a previous body when they've had good reason for the decision that they've made, even though I may not personally agree with it. I'm just very cautious about doing that. So I know that it's not going to change the process or the code and about how those applications move forward, but it is going to sort of whittle away at the will of the DRC to sort of stand up to these if they see, well, it's just gonna get appealed and overwritten. Because that is not a concern that anyone else share.
I agree, and I also think that's a problem to your point is it becomes easier and easier to approve it once for the DRC, whether it's we are doing it or whoever's allowing it, when you do allow that first one in the neighborhood and to your point, the next one comes in and says they did it and the DRC is going to have a much harder time saying it's not compatible. Because the more of them that are there, then obviously the more compatible arguably it becomes. So I do think that this is very, very important. We are saying that we think this is compatible with that street. And obviously, Commissioner Chow and I always don't agree with that.
And I I think I think there's one thing that's also considered is is the homeowners' decision or not, ability to put a solar system on his roof, which is not under pervview, by the way, right?
Correct.
So the and I'll just say the worst thing that could happen is everyone forgoes the RC and finding it's a Tesla roof on big shiny black, which is horrendous the way it looks. Oh, I've seen it. Yes. And they're already on in the city on certain homes. And then what? Right? I mean, we have we have a homeowner who wants to do it to replace his roof so it doesn't have leaks and put it with a product of a material that will facilitate and allow him to save energy, which we're all on board, right? Yet, we have this issue. And so the the alternative to that is is solar tiles, right, that are actually roofing materials and where we will have no say or or any type of purview over. And then we are truly in a place where we're like, okay. Right? And I'm just, I think it's something we all have to be very cognizant about. Because it's coming. It's I mean, solar is is a huge thing and it's adjusting. There's there's certain things that have changed in the way they're they're being reimbursed and 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 the the rates that are being reimbursed based upon having solar. However, it it still does not sway folks to have their Tesla roof with their Tesla parked in the driveway, which more frequent. And so whether you're on one side of the fence or another, it's a reality. And I think when we make these decisions, it's something you have to not you have to be you have to take into consideration. And it's not something you can just be in a bubble.
I could, if I may, my opinion, so a couple of questions. One of the questions was can if if there is not a compatible or something similar in the neighborhood, literally compatible with this. So I I think absolutely yes. Like like my colleague, it it could be compatible with itself in the neighborhood. As to how a composite shingle roof looks down the road, I I do have experience with that. I do have. I don't know if it's the same type of quality as composite that is being proposed by the applicant appeller now. I have I have several properties not in the city and they do not age well. Over time, my experience has been that you start seeing shiny raylors that kind of start appearing and it it looks like it is just a reflective, you know, spray of salt, kind of like on the on the composite sheet. And it starts looking really weathered and tattered, tattered. And it is not of the type of material or the look that I believe that our fair city deserves. Now, yes, you can walk on it. Yes, it's easier to to replace sheets. In fact, I was just on the roof with a roofer here in El Serena the other day talking about replacing and yeah, composite is very, very inexpensive. It's very expensive. It's quick. It's easy for them to put down. But it is just not the type of aesthetics that is pleasing. Maybe brand new, everything is great, just like a brand new white shirt or a brand new, you know, white let, you know, tablecloth. And then after a couple of uses or after time, it it just does not look in my personal opinion. So now maybe these products are superior. They they seem to have been improved compared to the thing, the the materials that I've been working with. You know, one one place I I have a composite shingle roof is in Big Bear and the snow is different and treats differently than it does here in LA or in other cities. But that being said, yes, it is very inexpensive, but that inexpensive option it it over time to me makes it seem like it would not be compatible with its lifetime, maybe after five years, maybe after ten years with the rest of the neighborhood. And that assumes that people will constantly replace it with, you know, once it needs to be replaced. And I certainly hope that's the case. We certainly can't force anybody to do it. But I too am concerned about your point about, hey, we opened up a floodgates and now it it gets on the approval list of qualities that of roofing materials that look great when they're new installed and everybody starts doing it. And then now we've set a precedent in order to bring this type of material in. So
Just let me might send some this. There's a tremendous variation in quality and this is one of the better enough saying that because it's one of the better change your mind or anything like that, but I've seen what you just described. I don't believe this falls into that category. There are others that we talked about are equally as as high quality floor composition. So I'm not troubled by so much. And so as far as the solar goes, they're talking right now about so many different variations on what most over we're talking about. what most over we're talking about.